Time being seven thirty P M. We're calling the Tustin Planning Board meeting to order. Fudge to the flag. Okay, the minutes were sent to us a while back. Anybody have any comments? I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll second that.
Here we have the motion on the floor to accept our minutes for our April twenty second twenty five meeting. It's been seconded. Any further comment? All in favor?
I don't know.
Against? Okay, except our minutes.
Now, we were going to do the secret before. I was doing for seven thirty. Are you going to fill with fifteen minutes or something? Yeah, we say that. Okay. We want these guys to leave for the secret and then say that people go to the system. Up down and. Well, they're gonna, they're gonna refuse themselves. Oh, yes. Then yeah, they should step away from it. Whenever you do anything involving this, they're accusing you of like, they can step away from the table.
Okay, bye man. Then like, we have to change. And we could plant ourselves nine days at Saint Lask.
Yeah, well, he's gonna read them.
Okay, we're going to do our seeker part one. Upper Delaware Hospitality. Mike's going to be a reader.
All right, we ready? Yeah. Okay. Project and sponsor information is Upper Delaware Hospitality Corporation. The location is one seventy fourth Bridge Street, Narrowsburg, rooftop. Brief description of proposed action. Edition of a rooftop outdoor seating terrace to an existing eating and drinking establishment as a customary et cetera use. Name of the applicant. Their sponsor is Upper Delaware Hospitality Bridge Road in Wylandville. And on to the seeker, which now includes the answers provided by the. Does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of a plan, local law, ordinance, administrative rules, or regulation? No. Number two, does the post act require a permit, approval, or funding from any other government agency? If yes, list the agency's name and permit or approval. Town of Tustin Building Department and Planning Board. Check yes. Total acreage of the proposed action, zero point three one seven acres. Total acreage to be physically disturbed, zero point zero acres. Total acreage, our exciting contiguous properties, zero point three one seven acres. Check all land uses that occur on or are adjoining or near the proposed action. And the responses are industrial, commercial, and residential parentheses suburban. Number five, is the proposed action A, in permitted use under the zoning regulations? The answer here is not applicable and A.
Why is that? Why is it in there?
What it says.
Yeah, I know, but why did they check in A and nasty? I wish number A.
Uh, five A.
I bet. It's permitted use under the zoning regulations. They checked in that. I think that's correct.
It should be yes.
Yes, yeah. Okay.
Are you revising that way? Yes. Yeah. Okay. Uh, five B, assisted with the adopted comprehensive plan. Yes. Is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape? Yes. Is the site of the proposed action located in, or does a juror? A join, I should say. They stand sharp.
You wish.
I wish. Getting ahead of the game here. State listed critical environmental area. No. Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? The answer here is no. Are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action? And the answer here is yes.
Do we have anything? Who has any public transportation? They put a yes.
Well, I, I, I.
You're not used to New York.
But still the sound like, I think they were talking maybe about like Uber or taxis or something.
I wouldn't truck it one if you stand out there in the. So maybe we could change that.
Yeah.
And that's a yes to a no. Are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action? Yes. Uh, number nine, does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code required? Answer here is yes. Will the proposed action connect to an existing public private water? Yes. Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utility? Yes. Does the project site contain or is substantially contiguous to building archaeological site? Or district which is listed on the National Estate Register of Historic Places? Or that has been determined by the Commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation? To be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places? And the answer is no. Is the proposed site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive? For archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory? No. Does any portion of the site of the proposed action or the lands adjoining the proposed action? Contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by a federal, state, or local agency?
That should be no.
Be a no, okay? And the part B, would the proposed action physically alter or encroach into? Any existing wetland or water body in areas? No. Identify the typical habitat types that occur on or likely to be found on the project site. Check all that apply. They have checked urban and suburban. Does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animal? Or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered? No. Is the project located within the hundred year flood plain? No. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? No. Uh, A, will stormwater discharge flow to adjacent properties? No. Will stormwater discharges be directed to established conveyance systems run off of storm drains? No. Does the proposed actions include construction or other activities that will result in the impoundment of water or other liquid? Such as a retention pond or waste balloon? No. Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility? No. Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the subject of remediation for hazardous waste? No. It's signed Frederick Toomey, dated four twenty five twenty twenty five.
Ready? Do we have a motion to accept part one of the seeker as red just?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion to accept our part one seeker on Upper Delaware Hospitality Court with a second. Those in favor? Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Opposed? Okay, pass that. Shall we move on to section two?
Um, section two.
It's our section.
It's our section, yes. This is the short environmental assessment form. This is the impact assessment. Uh, starting off, number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
I would say no or small.
No or small impact. Okay. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
No. Okay. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public private water supplies?
No.
Part B of that, uh, will the proposed action impact existing public private wastewater treatment utilities?
I think that would be considered a small impact, a little more use. No.
No. Okay. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, et cetera?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
Okay, so any board member have any changes to any of those answers that they'd like to discuss? Because I've been giving the answers and everybody else has been quiet.
Yeah, you've been answering quite well.
You're happy with it, Brendan. Brendan and Peter, you okay?
I'm fine with it, sir.
Okay, thank you. So, we're moving on to what's part three of part two.
Uh, part three, determination of significance. We need to read the top part or we just go to the checkbox?
Well, I think, I think you should read the top part because it's relevant to.
Relevant to, okay. Part three, determination of significance. For every question in part two that was answered, moderate or large impact may occur. Or if there is a need to explain why a particular element of the proposed action? May or will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact. Please complete part three. Part three should, in sufficient detail, identify the impact. Including any measures or design elements? That have been included by the project sponsor to avoid or reduce impacts. Part three could also explain how the lead agency determined that the impact may or may not be significant. Each potential impact could be assessed. Considering its setting, probability of occurring, duration, irreversibility, geographic scope, and magnitude. Also consider the potential for short term, long term, and cumulative impacts. We want to.
Well, I think what you want to do is you want to acknowledge in that space of focal below that. I think you should acknowledge what the board found the answers to be in part two. Which was they all know to small.
Know, just say no to small or.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The, the completion of part two resulted in the conclusion that potential impacts fell into the no to small.
Okay.
Now type it on there.
He's got a handwriting because it's right there.
No, want me to hammer it?
Yeah, I'm not, because I'm not printing this one.
Okay. You're not?
He's going now.
You want to help whoever tries to read?
I guess you're not hooked up either.
No, not to the sprinter.
Okay.
For tubes. In binding, which is basically what we check in the box to already. Uh, if we call it no or show impact. All. Okay, now down to your bottom.
Down to the bottom, we have to check a box here. Yeah. Uh, check this box if you have determined based on the information and analysis above and any supporting documentation that the proposed action may result? In one or more potentially large or significant adverse impacts? And an environmental impact statement is required. Or? Check this box if you have determined based on the information and analysis above? And any supporting documentation that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact. But then we're checking second. Good.
And the new H C S system planning, husband planning.
Board, the date is May twenty eighth.
I'm signing it.
You sign or I sign?
You sign also.
You sign as the preparer, Mike, and.
Sign up there.
And I think you should have a motion and a, yeah, apply the board to.
Okay, I will accept the motion that we. Accept our part two and have checked this box on part three and they'll sign this. Script environmental assessment form.
Second that motion.
Okay.
Well, I'll make the motion.
I thought you were making the motion, but all right.
I don't try not to.
All right, Brendan, are you making?
Yes, I am.
And I will second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept the short environmental assessment form for Upper Delaware Hospitality Court. And we have a second. Any further comment? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's carried. Pass this all back up to Amy for.
I will do that.
Okay, the hour has passed seven forty nine, so. We can open our public hearing. It was at seven forty five.
Do we need to recess first? No.
You're fine.
Okay, recess the.
Just make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we now open public hearing.
You know, second that.
Okay, we have a motion to open our public hearing. It's been seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's out. Just, I have, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't think it was just saying, I have one comment that was in writing.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest acknowledge that what you received, you received the one short comment? Which you can point out, and you also received the rather lengthy submission that was made on the Narrowsburg Union letterhead. And, um. And you've also received back from the county their determination on the two thirty nine release. I think all of that should be put on the record before you take any verbal comment.
Okay, good.
You want this? I get, yeah, let everybody have the benefit.
I'm a trusted. I'm one hundred percent against this. I am one that is going to be affected by this. I know this is probably already a done deal. For the record, I vote no. If I could make it to the meeting, I would. Debbie Swenson. Okay, that's written one. I think everybody has seen one from Narrowsburg Union and all the.
We're gonna do the.
Okay, if you want to.
All right, I can, want me to read it in?
We got a letter from, uh. Sullivan County Planning Division on this project. And they gave us local determination. They also said that we understand there may be an issue in encroachment into D P W right of way. The applicant will need to work with the county D P W to ensure that the safety guidelines are met and permits are obtained. Got that, Fred? Okay. So. You good?
You're good.
On behalf of the applicant, can I just take a comment about the application? First of all, these are the mailings. Okay, we sent out twenty five and nineteen were returned.
It did pretty good.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, they're attached, I guess.
Yeah.
Another green and white that's been mailed for the twenty five.
Yeah, I've got those here.
Thank you.
I just want to, uh, my name is Michael Davidoff. I'm attorney on behalf of the applicant, Upper Delaware Hospitality. And Fred Toomey here is associated with Upper Delaware Hospitality. I just want to point out that, uh. Uh, as you are aware, this is not the first time that Upper Delaware has been before, uh, the boards. Uh, initially, the, uh, initial plan, there was, was approved. And a certificate of occupancy, uh, back on October fifth of twenty twenty one was provided and approved. Now, it was, the approval of the certificate of occupancy came with a letter dated October fifth, twenty twenty one? From James Crowley, the building inspector and code enforcement officer. And it specifically indicated that the certificate of occupancy, uh, for the premises, and this is the premises, one seventy four Bridge Street, bar blown. Uh. Was for the renovations and alterations of the nineteen thirty three square foot first floor showroom? To an eating and drinking establishment and for a roof replacement. The certificate of occupancy, which was issued then, uh, specifically indicated that it did not include the occupancy of the roof deck. And that roof deck is the one on top, and that's what we're here for on this application. It specifically said that the use of the roof deck, uh, was not approved by the planning board when it granted the special use permit? On August seventeenth of twenty twenty, which everybody agrees, we agree. Uh, it, it indicated in this letter that if we wish to utilize the rooftop deck for any purpose? It will be necessary for you to apply to and receive from the town of Tustin Planning Board? An appropriate approval of an amendment to the existing special use permit? And that's what we're here today about, seeking to amend the existing special use permit? To now include the rooftop deck. Um. Uh, and we, we understand that the first step is to, uh, have this application. And then after this application, hopefully, if it's passed, then we need to, uh, go before, have the building inspector issue? Uh, a certificate of occupancy for that rooftop deck. And, uh, basically that's, uh, why we're here then. For the, uh, extension, expansion of the special use permit to include the rooftop deck.
Good evening, planning board. My name is Brendan Jeter Wyden. I've been a lifelong second resident of Narrowsburg, and my family has been in the valley for a hundred and twenty years. We feel very strong about our connection to Narrowsburg. And I make the following comments to you as a New York State licensed professional engineer. With over forty years of experience preparing documents of all kinds for all kinds of construction, including drawings? For submissions to towns, cities, municipalities, and other authorities having jurisdiction? And volunteering on code committees, doing reviews of other design professionals, doing peer review? For some of the greatest buildings in the world. As we have communicated earlier, the drawings submitted by the Barvelogy team are grossly incomplete and misleading. And they misled you, the planning board. The parties responsible for creating these documents, including the drawings? Appear to not be knowledgeable about the many major issues of a project of this type. And I'm going to speak to a few of them right now because they affect the people in this room and they affect people we know and love in this town. Project invokes many large triggers for major New York State code compliance, which are missing from the documents. Some of these triggers include a change in occupancy type from an auto showroom to a bar tavern. That right there is a huge change, which requires complete code compliance. It's a mixed use occupancy in the same building. It's a bar tavern on one level. If you approve it tonight, two levels, but I hope you don't. And an automotive service garage below. And it's the creation of an area of public assembly. And if you approve what's being proposed, it'll be two areas of public assembly. You are heightening the risk, you're heightening the intensity of people in a hazardous area. These triggers mandate significant analysis of the existing building, which has not been documented and which the town must insist upon. Four years ago, we and other members of the public have asked the town and the applicant multiple times whether the building had been evaluated? By a New York State licensed structural engineer? To certify that the existing structure and the new loads imposed on the building? Satisfy all the code requirements. This needs to be a submission by a New York State licensed structural engineer? Showing his or her analysis of the condition of the existing structure? And calculations of the capacity of the existing structure? And the new loads added to show that it's safe and it's compliant. None of this has been submitted, despite numerous times that we've been told, oh, yes, it was done, it's coming, it's coming. Basically, we've all been lied to. As a public assembly space, there are requirements for egress? Fire protection? Ventilation? Sanitation and emergency lighting? None of which are included in the project to the degree they need to be. Regarding sanitation of the property and the existing sanitary system? It uses gravity flow, does not use gravity flow, it relies on a holding tank and a pump to pump out wastewater up to Bridge Street. We are, we own the property behind, we own the property across the street, we own the property on the east side, and the property on the north side. If the sanitary system is overwhelmed because of overuse, it's going to drain onto our property. As well as provide a general health concern. We've been told that someone in the town had said that the existing tank should be increased to a two thousand gallon tank and the pump increase. If that's our knowledge, that's not done, it's not reflected in any of the documents. But it would seem that would be a minimal thing you would do in such a situation. Each of these criteria require a thorough set of calculations to demonstrate code compliance. This is typically done, there's nothing uncommon, this is done all the time. Particularly for areas of public assembly where you have a lot of people and the, a lot of lives in a small space at risk. As a mixed use dock, it would see with public assembly spaces above a hazardous space, which would be the automa, the automotive service garage. Massive and active fire protection systems are required to provide a separation? Between the hazardous areas and the public assembly areas. Emergency illumination is required to provide safe egress in the event of a blackout. Calculations are required to be provided to demonstrate light levels along the entire path. Think about nighttime blackout, no lights. Everybody's going to try to. Everybody's gonna try to rush to the door to get out. You need emergency illumination. Paths of egress through the building need to be protected from a common fire vent. They need to be of an adequate size, dimension is measured to the inch, it's critical. And they need to have no instructions in the pathway egress. Egress doors must swing in the direction of egress. You shouldn't have to run up to a door and pull it towards you to get out. You should have push bar hardware to get out. This is standard in areas of public assembly. You've all seen them, you all know what we're talking about. All of the above plus other comments have been previously made, mostly four years ago in one way or another, and they've not been addressed. If the identified and documented shortcomings manifest themselves in an injury or death, the patrons, staff, or first responders, the town will find itself in an indefensible position of the sole authority which made a decision to allow it to be built that way and to be occupied that way. Right? This part, this panel, you, you, you are protecting the town, you're protecting patrons, staff, and first responders who will run into the building and are, should expect to have certain safety measures included in the building, which are not there. I don't know who the professional is who's gonna take the responsibility for all of these requirements, code requirements, which you have to enforce and the code enforcement officer have to enforce. But any reputable licensed architect, licensed engineer would have all the calculations done, they would certify all the code requirements that they've been met with calculations that can be verified by the CEO. And they would have liability insurance. And errors and omissions insurance that are their stake, that what they've done is right and correct. And frankly, if the town doesn't require that the licensed professionals have the appropriate insurance, you're gonna be stuck holding the bag. Just think what happened if a hundred people were caught in a fire or in a building collapse. You have a hundred people looking to sue the town for millions of dollars each, to bankrupt the ti- the town in no time. So, look, I don't mean to paint it all doom and gloom, but it is, right? You, you, you have to protect the town, your job is to protect the town. Your job is to demand that the documents are right and that the right people with the right know-how, the licensed professionals, have taken responsibility to give you the right answers. Thank you.
Okay, just very briefly, starting from that. I'm not gonna go through what we went through. We were in four courts. We were in the, in the Supreme Court of Solomon County. We were in the appellate division of Supreme Court and Court of Appeals. And all of these arguments, uh none of which prevailed in any of the courts. In all of the courts, we were successful in, in, in uh upholding the certificate of occupancy that was uh approved by this board. And I'll just, all of these arguments have nothing to do with the application that's before your, this board. The only app- application before this board is for an amendment to the already existing special use permit. The CEO has already been granted for the, for the, the first floor renovation from a showroom office to an eating and drinking establishment and roof replacement, a reading from the certificate of occupancy. They've already agreed, uh the, the certificate of occupancy has already permitted by resolution thirty-three twenty the special use permit for Narrowsburg Motors to change of use from motor vehicle to an eating and drinking establishment. All of what's there has been approved except the use of the rooftop deck. And that's the only issue that's before this board at this time.
Sue.
My question has to do with the approval of using the roof as the, whatever they plan to use it for. And I only have one question. I happen to live with a professional engineer, discussed this something with him, and Mr. Wyden said almost the exact same thing. Is, has a statement from a certified structural professional engineer who is licensed in the state of New York as he said that this rooftop is strong enough for public occupancy. And I also would like to repeat something he said, which I didn't think of, but you guys are responsible for any damage at first if you give approval to this application. I understand the CEO was granted for the first floor. I don't know why some people might think that that would automatically say that the second floor is also occup- occupiable. Thank you.
Good evening, if you may, Kara Caballo with the law firm of J and G Law. We represent the Wydens. I'll be brief. Um this, it's undisputed that this is obviously, um all of the comments here are pertaining to the application. It's undisputed that we're amending the existing special use permit for the rooftop deck. Um the only thing I'd like to address here is um our, the applicant has made changes even this evening uh to the short environmental form uh EAF. Our firm today ran the EAF through the DEC EF mapper um and, and had some different conclusions from what was presented today that I would offer to the board uh just to include in the record, and I have a copy of what we um got from the DEC EF mapper that's uh different from what was presented here today. And that is in item uh twelve A. It, that, does the project site contain or is it substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site or district which is listed on the National or State Register of Historic Places? Or that has been determined by the commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the state register? And is the projects, B, is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive to archaeological sites? Uh both of those came up yes on the DEC mapper. Um number thirteen, does any portion of the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by a federal, state, or local agency? That also came up uh yes on the DEC EF mapper. Number fifteen, does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered? Um that's number fifteen, came up yes on the EAF mapper, and it listed Ball of Evil and Swallow Tail. And also number twenty, has the site of the proposed action or adjoining property been the subject of remediation onboarding or completed for hazardous waste? And that also came up yes on the DEC EF mapper, which is also probably, you know, considered, considering it was an automotive um parts, and I know the Wydens have uh raised the issue of there potentially having been batteries um disposed of in it behind the building. Those are also relevant. And so simply, we, we just, um, you know, the form, it, it, these things might indicate from the DEC mapper, not necessarily that they do exist, but certainly it requires and, and should require additional investigation into these issues. And they need to be a- addressed and further investigated, um especially in light of the fact that, you know, changes were made here tonight. And I, I have our printout from the DEC mapper um that I would offer into the record if, if the, um, may I approach? Here, here's our conclusions from that.
Sure.
Kara, Kara, was there any specificity in terms of what the mapper revealed? Uh, or was it just a generic answer?
Very generic, it's really just for guidance, it, and it's not, and i- in all candor, it's not always um i- i- accurate, right? It's, it's very broad, but it, what it does is it can flag some uh identi- and identify some issues that, that should be investigated further. And so we would respectfully submit on behalf of the Wydens, you know, and, and certainly in light of the fact that they're still making changes here tonight, that these issues could be addressed. And also, given the public safety concerns that have been raised before this board, uh we would submit that the application should be denied here tonight. And if not denied, then certainly the public hearing should be left open for uh further consideration into these issues, uh environmental and public safety. And certainly, if, if not deny, uh denied or, or held open, then that's conditional approvals of the various, but that, that's not what the Wydens are asking for, we're asking uh that if you deny uh this evening for the babies to hold open for um further investigation. Thank you for your time.
May I just say this? I'm sure that the original application for the special use permit also had a secret uh resolution, okay? And all of those things that supposedly now are shown on the mapper to possibly uh indicate uh anything have to do with the entire project. Uh, the use of the rooftop deck is not going to make any change to anything that was just mentioned. Uh, th- they would uh have an effect on the entire project, which already has been approved. Uh, and for which I'm sure there was a secret then, uh and for which there'd be nothing that is raised in, in this supposedly generic mapping would, would affect uh the environment just by also using the upper deck.
Can I also add to my comments? I'd like to address, and we'll address separately in documents, but the terminology used is improper and incorrect. And it follows on improper documentation uh on the drawings. So, uh, Mr. Twomey's attorney kept referring to a deck. The definition of a deck is a structure that's low to the ground. This is not a deck. This is another floor being added to a building. It's not some incidental little thing. If you look at what a, I think the special use is, it's for an antenna, for like a TV antenna. This is not a TV antenna. This is a full structure, heavy construction on a roof, on an eighty-year-old or whatever age roof. Right? So, please don't use the word deck, an improper term.
I just wanted to add one thing, okay? The use of the word deck is not gonna be used by me, but it's used by your building in- inspector. Uh initially, the building inspector indicated in his initial denial that they need to expand it of the special use they, that they already have to reflect the addition of the rooftop deck. Those other issues that were raised in regard to the uh uh construction or whatever, that's the building inspector uh determination. He has made no determination, he has not said anything at all indicating that there's any problem whatsoever with the construction. All he said was, and in the original CEO as well as in the denial, that you have to expand the special use permit. And the uh same thing which would go with any type of the special use permit to include the upper deck.
I met today down at the uh playground in the flats with two members of the town board who were down there doing beautiful work. Uh it was mentioned to me that the um bandstands, the, that the seating that was down there has been removed. I said, why, you know, why have they taken, taken away these grandstands? They said, because the town's uh insurance carrier has said that that needs to be done to protect the town's liability. They are out of sleep and no longer considered safe. And I thought, that gives me a very warm and fuzzy feeling that our town leadership is being proactive in protecting public safety, which brought me to thinking about this meeting and the last time that this board considered this issue. The point at which I remember being last involved and so forth was discussing the roof and whether or not it had in fact been surveyed by a licensed professional engineer, required by code as far as the I know, in order to protect it, among many reasons, protect health, safety, and emergency workers, but uh also uh the town's liability, because I've been mentioned, you guys hold the bag. I don't know anything about the, the legal issues that have been discussed here. I, I focus on engineering, that's what I did for thirty-five years. And I'm concerned that that roof was built to keep the weather off a car dealership. Put a bunch of people, as far as I know, I don't know what changes have been made since then. I found in that building, I was in that movement, I don't know if it changed or maybe it was structurally. Thank you.
I was on the board, my name is Joe Carrario, I was on the board back when they first applied for this permit. The permit was for the first floor, nothing about a roof. It was the nine hundred and something square feet, not nineteen hundred square feet. The park where the garage was, it was supposed to be a spot for a car. They were gonna advertise or build plastic Mustangs and put electric engines in them. That didn't happen. It was supposed to come with fourteen parking spots behind the building, two handicap spots on the side of the building. None of that happened. Then, I happened, about a year later, they came to us, the board again, to get a permit for the rooftop. I had asked them if they had structural engineer inspect that roof, and I was told they did. And it was an architect stamp. And I said, this is an architect stamp. And they told me that an architect stamp supersedes the engineer. I've been in commercial and industrial construction for forty years, I ran a lot of work. An architect's stamp does not supersede an engineer's stamp. Then I happened to show up at a DPA meeting a month later. Found out that they had a permit for the whole building, rooftop included, which it was rescinded at that meeting. Was, the rooftop was built, it never was inspected, and Crowley said that it's there that night. So, you can't inspect something that was never permitted in the first place. They went and built the second floor on the building without a permit. Their original permit was for sixty people, and that's what we allowed the parking spots for, which they had not supplied any of the parking area. Now they're talking about a hundred additional people to put on this roof. We don't have the sixteen spots that they promised us in the first place. Hundred more people, they should be required to find more parking places. They have not. So, and I agree with Mr. Wyden, those friends, I mean, I've seen a lot of friends in the league, they were jokes. They're not professional friends. And as far as safety and as group, any commercial building, you gotta be able, in case of a fire, you're going to flip the door out, not pull it in. I don't know why they would give it a feel what they have now.
Any further? Sue?
Um, I'm Sue Powell. Um. Is the public allowed to see all the applications? In that, by that, I mean, including a statement from a professional structural engineer that the roof is safe for occupancy?
You're allowed to see anything that's, that's been filed with the town, it's a matter of public record.
So that would include a statement?
If, if one is filed for that effect, it doesn't mean that, I'm not, I, I, I'm not in the position to answer that for you tonight. We're certainly gonna take a look at it, though.
Um, how can I find out if it's required?
Well, you can seek advice from a professional and get your own independent advice. It's not my job as town attorney to advise the public in terms of that, so I'll advise this board.
Okay, then let me rephrase that. Is a statement from a certified structural engineer required for a space that will be used by the public to say that it's safe? That it's structurally sound enough? It, I guess that's a question for the board. Is that included in the application?
It's, it's not part of the application. The board will evaluate, because this is being raised now at the public hearing, they'll evaluate whether they believe more information in that regard is required or not.
Well, these concerns were made by the planning board when I was on it, and none of them were ever looked into. I mean, I was big on a structural engineer, and I never was given anything from a structural engineer. All they had was an architect's stamp that was unqualified.
We just wanna clarify, so you need a contingency for answering these questions?
Well, I mean, it's, that's up to the board, that's entirely up to you guys. I think. Well, I, I think.
Well, I I think. My my suggestion at this point, it just can't just make sure that everybody, everybody wanted to say something and said whatever they want to say at least tonight.
Is there anybody online that we? Wanted to be heard? No.
Okay, Mr.
Yes, I'd like to just say one thing, a couple things actually. Want to address the issue of parking that's been just been brought up. We've been open now for two years in chain. We're open three hundred, basically every day except for Wednesdays. We've been open for more than a year. Alright, we're open more than any other business in the town, as far as I know, except for the gas station and the supermarket. There's been not one issue with park.
I I you're incorrect.
We didn't interrupt you. Joe, do you have it? Institute have it? And then please send it to me, okay? Instead of just sending letters, me directly. You have my email at it.
Guys, let's let's direct comments.
Well, you're the one addressing. So anyway, so there's been no issue with parking. Okay, we have been open. People park at the church, they park in front of the library, they park next door in Ned's place, which I used to rent, but nonetheless. They park and they walk, which is what I want. This is your town and and I'm part of the development of the town, and we're going to grow, and grow that way by walking. Okay, the obsession with parking is fictitious, proven it, and everybody knows that. They're just using, some folks are using it as a tactic for whatever purpose, perhaps to buy the property as they. Completely agreed with in their letter that they sent to me and to you guys. So the parking issue, let's just put that aside and stop acting like children. Second thing, the concern about my building is very interesting to me. There's a lot of concern and I appreciate it. Do you really think that I would allow? Anything to happen in that building and put myself in financial jeopardy, possibly in jail? Absolutely not. So there's a lot of half truths being said, people with no knowledge of what's going on at all. And they don't believe that even if something did happen, that the town would be held liable. I'd like to see that law because that would be a real issue in every single city in the United States, possibly elsewhere. So again, the parking and the concern of my building. Is very interesting to me. I have insurance, I've been inspected, I've had the health department, even on the terrace, because we believe we were going to get it as we were told. By now along this party at Jackson and all that. Now, so we've been inspected, we've been visited by the S L N, which is very rare, right? We're visiting, no problem. We were visited by my insurance company multiple times, no problem. So I just, this half stuff and the half baked ideas that we've run around are really very strange. But nonetheless, we're here, we're asking a very simple thing. We're asking for an addition. The CMO issue is gone. We have a CFO, we've gone to the highest court, which won't even entertain it. It's it's a done deal, so. As far as just the deck and it's called the deck, it's called the roof deck. I don't see a big deal about that. And it's very small. I've actually reduced the square, the people patrons inside because I happen to have a lot of motorcycles and cars. And I like one. So I've got a lot of stuff there. We have probably half the capacity downstairs. The upstairs is seasonal. We're talking about maybe May, June, July, August, maybe, and when it's not raining. And we're trying to pretend like it's a big deal. There's something else going on here. We don't know yet what it is. We'll find out. But right now, that's all we're asking for. So I just wanted to let you know, Mike, also. Thank you very much for entertaining.
I just have to reply, parking. The patrons of Barbalogy consistently, but now there haven't been many. Because the bar seems to be closed a lot. But there are, on a regular basis, people parking in our parking lot, taking spaces away from our customers. And we have to ask them politely to leave, most do, some put up a fight, right? But if if that continues, we have to, we have to protect our property, our investment. We didn't put in the parking lot. So that Barbalogy's people could save a few steps. Barbalogy, as Joe said, made a commitment to the number of parking spaces, to having handicap. There are no handicap parking spaces. They made commitments on the drawing, but I don't think Barbalogy realized. If the documents have to reflect the reality of what you intend to build. And you need professionals to say that it meets the code. And then you have to build what you got approval for, not what you really wanted to do. Or the changes you made, you have to build what you got approval for. Maybe that's a foreign concept.
Yes.
I just want to say something. I can't speak to permits or engineering or anything, but I can speak to being a small business owner. And I was shocked to hear that this was still. An issue and I just want to say, as we've watched Main Street change completely. And I think to the benefit of local business owners. No parking has changed on Main Street. We all seem to be doing fine. Uh, I've never seen your parking lot completely full, but I see a lot more lines being drawn. But. Don't really seem to work as a parking lot, but that's your business and that's your prerogative. And I just think, I believe you guys are members of the local chamber of commerce. And as a local chamber member, I think we should be supporting each other to open small business in our town. This, imagine if this money that went into litigation went into our chamber of commerce or our youth programs. I mean. It just, it feels wasteful and hateful. And I just, I can't speak to any of the other stuff, but this just needs to. Stop. As a local business owner, I just wish we could all support one another.
As a local business owner, this town depends, its whole economy is driven by visitors. Right? So we welcome them to our town. We all depend on it. People make their livelihoods, Main Street, Pete's Market, Erie Bridge, wherever you are. We need the visitors to come in. One catastrophe, one catastrophe on one piece of property will give the entire town a black eye. So we will all bear the cost of that. We will, we will bear the cost. We'll be a town and we're happy to take people's money, but we're not that interested in securing your safety. So it is an issue for the entire town.
Okay, any further comments from the audience?
Have you want to? Well, my suggestion is is let's find out. I would, I think the board would benefit. We've got a rather substantial submission that was made on behalf or by the Wydens in opposition to the application. Does the applicant want an opportunity to respond to that in writing? Because I know I haven't had a chance to, I mean, I've glanced at it, but I haven't read it through detail, cover to cover. My guess is that most of the board has had an opportunity.
I read it cover to cover.
I could as well.
Need a lot of redundancy.
So, you know, I think for a complete record, it would be helpful to have. A a submission response to that, but that's up to you guys, whether you want to or don't want to do that, but I think the board should afford you that opportunity if you.
Well, I appreciate that, but in all honesty. Everything I believe that was included in that submission has nothing to do with. The application to extend the special use permit. It has to do with its exact duplicate of what was submitted in regard to the prior. Situation which litigation showed has no bearing. And and I just don't think that there's anything there that needs to be responded to. Because it it's not applicable to the issue of special use. And then anything else, any of the other structural, all that, that's why you have the building inspector, the building department. And 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 there hasn't been any that I've seen requests from the building department. Of any issue at all with the construction or anything of that nature.
There was no issue from the building inspector because. There had to be drawings. There are drawings that he would go and look over and make sure to work with them correctly. But the drawings, there was no structural drawing for a place. Because there was no structural engineering for it. Basically, they were sketches of what they were going to put in the building. What was going to be where a bar, bar. Nothing on a roof. There was never nothing on the roof on everything. That we gave them.
At this point, I accept a motion to close the public hearing.
I will make that motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
What's in favor? Opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. We want to proceed on some of these questions.
I think we need to digest this. I don't think you're in a position to understand. You've heard a lot and you've got to.
We need some answers from somebody.
Well, does the town still retain an engineer?
Town does, but we don't have one right now.
Because that would certainly give us some guidance.
When I make a statement to that regard.
Why, why don't we, let me check with Crowley and see what he's got. Okay. And what he thinks he needs. And let me get, and let me get that information for you guys. And that seems reasonable, right?
Yeah.
And then and then we can digest that and and see whether there, you know, whether there's something that. Has to be addressed, whether it's a condition or whether it's something that has to be fleshed out before you guys take an action, but but. We're in the dark, right? We don't have.
A lot of these items are for the code, not.
But we don't, but. Right, but the planning board does does have a health, safety and welfare obligation as well, so we can't just ignore it. And we're not going to ignore it. We're going to address it. At least my recommendation. I don't have any. And um, but I I don't think, I don't think you're in a position to.
No, we are.
I think that fairness to all the parties, there's people that they're they're they're, somebody's not going to be happy with whatever decision you guys make. And I think it's, I think it's important for for everybody that has the benefit of of a, of an well articulated decision by this board. That that gives reasons for what it determines so that anybody who's dissatisfied can pursue whatever recourse they perceive they have to pursue. But I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to have a decision that's that's doomed to fail simply because it's not rationally done.
And I would encourage anybody, especially the applicant, if they have additional information or responses. They want to put in writing and on the record. Do so. And anybody from the public as well.
Well, the question, how long you want to keep the record open for in that regard, because, you know, it can just keep coming and. I'm not saying don't, but just understand, there comes a point in time where you have to. Right, we did have a public hearing. And the concerns have been brought to us. So let's do a little research and and evaluate those concerns and 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 use that for the, as the base on which you'll render an informed decision. And then the chips will fall where they fall. So we want to table this. And I need my recommendation, but that's up to you then. Right, so I I would make a motion. That we consider tabling the. Decision. And that it requires further investigation by.
Sound good to me. I'll second.
We have a motion to table. Upper Delaware hospitality application at this point. And a second, and further comment from board members.
The only other comment I would have is what's the timeline of table?
Well, it's it's going to come back on your agenda for next month.
Next month, okay.
Discuss it at that point.
I make one statement. As a license, but I'll. Install a. Dealer.
Time as well, by the way.
I know.
Okay.
But. It's an extreme code. It sounds like New York City Code is trying to be quoted here. I dine and. Are taking a lot of these establishments and. A lot of these retail stores are in buildings that look in worse condition than that. And I sit there and I dine and I look around and I don't see a fire alarm. You know?
There isn't one.
No, because there is no enforced firearm code here. You know, if the insurance company gives you a certificate of insurance and it's good enough for them, I feel it's good enough for us. And that's all I want to say, because I I've been in a lot of businesses around here and they're in shambles also. And this guy just threw a lot of money into the place and it is a tip top shape. I've been in it and I trust it. I would eat in there with my family and children. That's all.
Anything else on this?
I guess we have to hold on that motion on the table. The motion's made, it's been made, it's been seconded.
And commented on.
Right.
Those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? They're opposed? Therefore, the motion does not carry because we didn't have a comment for that. There's only four up here. If he's not voting, there's only three left.
Right. It's how many members of the board?
Seven.
Are you recused, Dan?
So the motion does not carry, so there is no table.
So now what? Somebody has to make some other kind of move.
And plus, the definition of a deck, it is a deck. If it was another floor, it would have walls and another ceiling on top, which would. Contribute to the load. It is a deck. You know, I've been in construction all my life. So. It just looks good to me.
So what are you advocating?
That we. Allow the roof deck. Without further investigation because all the plans were submitted, the C of, the CFO. Was given in the original. And. When the CFO was given, the deck was up there, wasn't it?
No.
Well, he built it after the CFO.
Actually, it's already built.
It was built.
It was already built, but there's.
Right, then you were told not to use it.
But because when it comes back, right, it doesn't cover, it doesn't cover. CEO does not cover.
The language. But it was there. Just very touchy to me.
I mean, the safety issue kind of revolves around a couple of the points that have been made here. In terms of having an engineer actually certify the integrity of the process. I don't know what the specific state codes are covering that and that's.
That's not an authority. That was code enforcement's permit.
Well, we do have that obligation.
Oh, understood, but I'm just saying you wouldn't know the code unless it's. That's not in your.
Not in our, not in our big.
We would rely on the counsel of the code enforcement.
That counsel.
Exactly.
The town has in the past.
Oh, we can see the numbers available for you for that too. I can't, those answers can't, those questions can't be answered.
And then once we get, I think, answers to those questions, I think we can then proceed and.
Right now, we can't.
Okay, so we're leaving it in limbo next meeting.
And we also make a motion and something gets carried, but I wouldn't recommend it.
Okay, our next meeting is also on a Wednesday this coming month because of primary day.
Okay, I will be out of town. Twenty second to the twenty sixth. Can we move it beyond that or? Right, okay, so.
Don't you like being able to control the meeting like that?
It'd be Superman.
Can we do it on Monday instead?
No, I'm leaving Sunday the twenty second. I will.
What day is that?
Week before Tuesday the seventeenth, Wednesday the eighteenth.
So we're talking the seventeenth?
Seventeenth, that town hall available.
We have no hearings, so it notices.
But you got to, a notice is going to have to be published, but the meeting has been changed.
Sufficient time to.
Oh, you have plenty of time for me. So which day were you talking about then?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
I'm you available.
I mean, I don't know. I'd like to try and make the motion again. If that will be allowed, I'd like to try to make the motion again that we table this for further investigation for the next meeting. Could I get a second on that?
I'll give you a second on that.
Okay.
But you have to convince Pete to.
I would say yes, but to just to have an engineer look at it, I give a letter. I thought, I, I see plenty of other places where you gotta pull off.
We're not even discussing.
I mean, I know all about that law.
We're just, we're just discussing tabling it for further investigation.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so let's do a vote on that, please. Can we vote on that?
Uh, so.
Ken, can you just read off my motion that we're gonna?
I'll make a motion like that.
Um, a motion was made for further investigation for the engineer.
Right, so that I, my, my motion was that we table until the next meeting, for further, during, during which time we will investigate further. And Mike did second that.
I second.
Okay, any comments on this? We have a motion to table to get more information from our engineer. It's been seconded. Any further comment?
No, no.
I guess we read that also.
No, no.
My own favor, aye.
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 Okay.
Carrie's. Okay, so now with.
That date might be a problem.
The seventeenth.
Seventeenth, that's the third Tuesday, right?
Yep.
Yeah, that's gonna be.
Okay, what other date?
I don't know, then we throw some other dates out there.
I mean, the town board has been running the way of power. Eighteen, you did the eighteen, Ken, huh?
We could start a little later, so that I have time.
The eighteen. So we did it tonight, um. It was Monday. I don't know, being later at the town board meeting.
Third Wednesday on, on any.
The.
The eighteenth is the third Wednesday.
Um, the tenth, you weren't here for a town board meeting.
That's a little short.
Yeah.
Hey, no short chokes, please. But you know, I'm, I think I'm the challenge, the challenge person sitting at this table.
Can Monday the sixteenth? So sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, throw that for you.
Very good, very good.
How about the ninth?
How about the nineteenth?
No, yep. The nineteenth is.
The nineteenth is technically a holiday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two, two days. Are you the thirteenth?
Something after Mike gets back.
I mean, you would originally meet on the twenty-fourth.
Move that thirty?
So, yeah, I mean, don't, yeah.
Oh.
That would work.
Yeah, oh, thirtieth.
But isn't, isn't the twenty, are you talking about the twenty-fourth?
They went over to the thirtieth.
Oh, thirtieth, okay, because the twenty-fourth is primary day.
We're at the thirtieth, yeah?
Yeah.
Thirtieth, okay.
Okay, we have a possibility of a meeting on June thirtieth.
That's acceptable to me.
Uh, we have a motion to change our meeting to that date, please.
I will make a motion that we, uh, move the date of the next planning board meeting to June thirtieth.
At seven thirty.
Very, uh, Mary and John can come back and vote on this, too.
Yeah.
Mary and John, if I can get your attention, you come back for this.
Okay, so this involves you guys.
Moving our meeting to June thirtieth, just a week later than the scheduled.
Seven thirty P M?
Seven thirty.
Okay.
We have a motion seconded. Any comment from board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You're thirty.
Seven thirty.
Okay, we got any?
Who loves to make a final comment? No.
No.
All right, we had no public hearings to set. Any further board comments? We have our meeting date set.
If it's not premature, I'd like to make a motion that we close the meeting?
Yeah.
I will second you, I know.
Right?
Right.
All righty, have a motion to adjourn on the floor.
Aye.
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 Trigger this too much concern.
Yeah. I don't want to take it long. No, it's five minutes.